Good evening and welcome to the June 1st, 2021 Northern Lebanon School District Board Meeting. I now call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence led by Director Gray.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, peaceful with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your head in a moment of silence.
Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Gray?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Sekelik? Nam?
Here.
Bucks?
Here.
Director Sekelik absent. All of the members are present.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We now move to item two, that is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move to adopt the agenda.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We move on to item three. We have one presentation this evening. That is by our student board representative, Aileen Zamba. Do we have Aileen online? Okay, maybe we will come back to Aileen later in the meeting. Then we'll move ahead to item four. That is our superintendent's report, Dr. Messinger.
Kirk, did you see Dylan by any chance? Okay, if he pops on at some point, we'd love to see his face and just say congratulations. I am going to talk about him, though. I asked Mr. Confer, who couldn't be here tonight, but he gave me a write-up. I just want to share with you, we had a, as we've had teams and/or individuals win championships, we've tried to recognize them. Dylan, most recently, won the District Three Track and Field Championship for shot put and discus and also finished fourth and fifth respectively in those two. Is there someone out there? Ah, there he is. Hey, Dylan. Dylan, I was told you wanted to give a speech. No. I'm gonna read some nice things about you, okay? This is from Mr. Confer. "I would like to recognize and congratulate Dylan Lambrecht for an outstanding high school scholastic and athletic career. Dylan is the son of Jeremy and Heather Lambrecht. He is an outstanding student athlete with 3.974 GPA, who has been on the Superior Honor Roll his freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior years, and have garnered many Lebanon County, Lancaster-Lebanon League, District Three, PIAA State, and national accolades in track and field. He participated in both indoor and outdoor track and field. He is a three-time letter winner because he missed his junior season. We all know why. During his sophomore season, he earned the following awards: Lebanon County Meat-Discus Champion, Lebanon County Meat-Shot-Put Second Place, Lebanon-Lancaster League Meat-Discus Champion, Lancaster-Lebanon League Meat-Shot-Put Third Place, PIAA District Three Meat-Discus Sixth Place, PIAA State Meat-Discus, oh, that's the same one, PIAA State Meat-Shot-Put Qualified. His junior season was canceled due to COVID-19, but he did earn fourth place at the PA Indoor Track and Field, and he earned a seventh-place finish at Indoor Nationals. He concluded his high school career this past weekend at the PIAA State Track and Field Meet at Chippensburg University. This school year, Dylan captured the Northern Lebanon High School shot-put record, 59 feet, 3 and 2/4 inches. In addition, here in the following: Lebanon County Meat-Discus Champion, Lebanon County Meat-Shot-Put Champion, Lebanon County Meat Outstanding Male Athlete, Lancaster-Lebanon League Meat-Discus Champion, Lebanon-Lancaster League Meat-Shot-Put Champion, Lancaster-Lebanon League Meat Central PA Runner Outstanding Male Field Athlete, PIAA District Three Meat-Discus Champion, PIAA District Three Meat-Shot-Put Champion, PIAA State Meat-Discus Fifth Place, and PIAA State Meat-Shot-Put Fourth Place. Dylan is an Order of London male 2020, 2021 CS Pop Kelsner Award nominee, which is presented by the Central Chapter of the Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame. And following graduation, he will be attending Penn State University and competing on the track and field team. Dylan, we'd like to congratulate you. That is impressive, hard to read, actually, all those things. It's an impressive accomplishment. I'm proud of you, both in the classroom and out of the classroom, as I'm sure the board is. And I'd like to officially, if it's okay with Director Bucks, recommend that we, that we put you in the minutes of the board meeting to recognize you there as well. And board members, did you have any questions or comments for Dylan?
Impressive.
Come up and wave at the camera, so.
Kara's back there. There you go. Just, there you go. Thank you.
Nice, but a demonstration would have been.
A demonstration, yeah, yeah. Hey, I appreciate you coming out. Impressive work. And I know you're, you got a few days left and you're on to, to great things at Penn State, and I'm sure they're glad. Are you gonna go to the football games? You don't know. All right. Well, again, thank you for coming, and you're, you certainly deserve the recognition we were able to give you tonight, buddy. Yep.
Congratulations.
Okay, a couple of things I just wanted to mention. First of all, on June 9th at one o'clock, we will be honoring our retirees. You're certainly welcome to attend. They'll get a, they'll have a little presentation and send them on their merry way. And a lot of them are on the agenda, or several of them are on the agenda, as substitutes, actually. They don't want to leave, and so we'll take them. Also, graduation, June 10th. I think at this point, you've either gotten your regalia and are ready to go with that. A lot since we last talked has changed in the world of COVID, and just wanted to give a brief update on where we are with that. As you know, the CDC and PDE basically gave a recommendation that since we were so close to the end, and since very few students had had an opportunity to be vaccinated, they recommended just kind of riding out the end of the year, the way it has been, which is what we've done. We have been able to set up graduation so that while they have masks for while they're changing inside, putting on their gowns, the entire ceremony is, is going to be able to be socially distanced. Now that we're at a moderate level, we're able to use the three feet, and we will not be needing masks outside for our graduates. Our spectators, who are vaccinated, will not need to wear masks. Obviously, we won't be asking for cards on the way in, so it's on your honor system, but that's what graduation at this point is looking like. I, I have to, we do have the ability for me to make recommendations to Director Bucks. We've started talking about that. I'd like to do that effective June 11th, and make some changes for vaccinated adults that will be working in the building. Our summer school really doesn't start until the 25th. It's, it's about 20-some kids. So I'll make some recommendations as far as that goes as well. And then on the 28th, from what I understand, the mask order is, is no longer. And so we did put in play some, we do have a plan for athletes. It's, it's similar to what we did in the fall. All outside sports, at that point, like soccer, they're doing some open field stuff. They did not require masks in the fall unless they were standing around. And basketball, they did wear masks. However, after speaking with Director Bucks, I think we're comfortable with some additional circulation, letting them play without the masks for the summer. The gyms are a little hotter. And, and then following the vaccination guidelines for spectators. So that's kind of where we're at. Any questions on, on that? Did I miss anything that you want to know about that? Okay.
So is it your understanding that with the change order on the 28th, that that would apply to the kids as well?
That's my understanding.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there's been no express limitation that it's, it's, it's for everyone, and it could be sooner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Messinger. Do we have Aileen? Okay, then we'll move to item five. Is there any old business for discussion this evening? Hearing none, I'll move on to the public input session. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Tonight, I have been informed that there, we do have one public comment request, and that is Ms. Martha Blau. Is, do we have her online?
A phone number. There's not. Phone number on. Oh, that's G. Bond, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, we can, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, is that too loud?
Ms. Ball, please state your name and address before speaking, and you have four minutes.
My name is Martha Blau. I live at 112 Racehorse Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting me voice my concerns and those of other parents in the Northern Lebanon School District. My son and I moved here two years ago to be part of the Northern Lebanon Wrestling Program, so I'm quite new to all of this. I have found that the wrestling coach's dedication to my son and to myself has been above expectation, so that's something I'm very happy about. It's definitely have been a highlight. Today, however, I'd like to address the school board's mask policy. I know this is a heated topic, and many parents don't want to rock the boat and lead the effort on getting rid of the masks, but I haven't met any parents that insist they want their child to wear a mask to school. I know at the beginning of this pandemic, we all panicked and did what we thought was best in the light of the lack of knowledge we had concerning COVID-19. Teachers, parents, and students equally had twice as much work and mental anguish making it through the school year. A year later, however, we need to do things differently. The degree I hold is in biology, and for many years, I worked in a lab, and I could tell you the kind of mask I had to wear, and it looked nothing like what the students wear to school every day. But let's say for a moment that, that the masks do prevent the virus, and let's argue that six hours a day, the kids are safe from this virus while at school. I'm hoping the board realizes that the remainder of the day, the kids are playing with the same kids outside of school, sleeping over each other's houses, and going to birthday parties without masks. So what does the six hours they're wearing the mask at school? What does that help? It certainly doesn't seem to prevent them from getting COVID. The mental anguish children feel during isolation in school and not being able to see others' facial expressions has been detrimental to our children. I can only imagine what the parents are going through for those children in our youngest grades, not being able to see facial expressions and read lips. Kids in kindergarten don't know any different. To them, school is sitting alone, not being able to interact with peers and teachers in a normal manner, and not being able to breathe. Let us show them what school is supposed to be. The seniors have been robbed of precious moments this year and last. Please allow these seniors to sit next to each other, hug each other, see each other's smiles and the smiles of their proud parents and teachers at graduation. This may be the only graduation they ever attend. It is a momentous moment in their life, and they're being robbed with key celebrations. As parents, we demand to choose on the behalf of our children whether they should wear a mask to school or not. We don't give up this medical right on the behalf of our children. As an adult, we can go out in public and not wear a mask, but our children are being forced to wear them and constantly reprimanded if they don't wear one. They're not being given breaks like they were promised, and they're forced to wear them outside and during exercise. My son was told the only way he could get out of wearing a mask during wrestling was to get a doctor's exemption. I tried, but I was denied. While some sports were allowed to compete without masks, my son was not. Why were some sports allowed to compete without masks and others were not? I'm thinking of track for one. I saw track compete without masks. Are you aware that the children that go to the orthodontist, all they have to do is use mouthwash for a minute, spit it out, and then they can sit there for up to an hour without a mask on? Why couldn't some of these other options been looked at for wrestling and other athletes? The school board's motto is kids first. I've not seen that this year. We have put the fear of government mandates over the well-being of children. It is written right in the Pennsylvania Child Abuse Policy that restricting the breathing of a child is considered child abuse. We were fearful of retribution and punished the kids for our fear. As a parent, I should have stood up a lot sooner and asked the board to reconsider masking children. We know the board has been giving some leeways how to conduct rules for COVID-19, and we ask that you continue to do so. For example, Northern Lebanon didn't restrict the walking in hallways in one direction, as some schools have. And for some of your wisdom in this manner, I am thankful, but more needs to be done. Let this be known that we, the people, refuse to mask our children any longer. If there is a surge of COVID-19 in the fall, we refuse to mask our children. Emphasis needs to be put on increasing our immune system through proper nutrition, exercise, and exposing the kids to germs, not face coverings, hand sanitizer, and isolation. Let Northern Lebanon be a leader in creating unique solutions to combating this virus. We do not have to answer to Governor Wolf as to how we treat our children, but we have to answer to God one day as to how we treat these innocent children. See that you do not despise one of these little ones. Forsake you that there angels in heaven continually see the face of my Father, who is in heaven. And that's from Matthew 18:10. As a parent, I acknowledge my failure this past year for not standing up for the right of my child. The parents of Northern Lebanon community refuse to put the decisions regarding our children into the hands of the public school system, whether it be the wearing of masks, the vaccination of children, and even the critical race theory curriculum that is trying to make its way into the public school system. My pledge is to be more watchful, vigilant, and to protect our most innocent members of society, our children. Please work with us on the behalf of our children.
That is four minutes.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. And I would like to ask our solicitor, Ms. Say, to address the legality of masks and the decisions that we've had to make throughout the year.
Yeah, so I think Dr. Messinger covered a number of the plans moving forward. And just to reiterate, there are some, there are two sort of basic mandates that we've been under since about November of, of last year. One of those required us to sign an attestation order at school districts. I'm proud to report that as of May 31st, that attestation order has been lifted. And the one primary mandate that we were under to require us to close when we hit a certain number of COVID cases in a building is no longer in place. So that's a really good thing for the rest of the year. That helps many districts salvage their graduations and their events and end-of-year activities. The second mandate that we are still bound by is what we've all referred to as the face covering order, or the amended face covering order. That is still current law, and as you heard Dr. Messinger mention, that's in place until June 28th by order of the governor as well as the Department of Health, both of which are entities that are binding on school districts. The great thing is, for those Pennsylvanians who've chosen to get vaccinated, if they achieve the 70% vaccination rate sometime in the next three weeks, that order can be lifted earlier than June 28th. Yeah, and that order will be binding on school districts. So to our knowledge, when the face covering order is lifted, it is lifted as to all individuals, including students. So that piece is still in place. If you read the guidance, that's on the Department of Health website as well as PDE's website. It makes very, very clear that despite the attestation process being over, this mandate is still upon us. Just from a more practical perspective, even outside of what that legal requirement is, the school district's current health and safety plan indicates that you're going to adhere to what the current law is. And so that's the decision that you and the board make. It's not dissimilar to you deciding what the student code of conduct is. So it may not be illegal for a, a child to do something in school, but it might be against your code of conduct and the principles you've established for your culture here at Northern Leb.
What about the Pennsylvania guidance to child abuse? It's, it's considered masking it?
As I was saying, the great thing about the amended face covering order is that it received a First Amendment, which incorporated by reference the CDC's changed guidance about vaccinated individuals. So even without further order of the Department of Health, we incorporated by reference that guidance from the CDC, and it established a permissive grant for school districts to allow vaccinated individuals to go unmasked. Again, that's a discretionary obligation. It's not a requirement. So districts can implement it, and it sounds like you guys are going to be implementing that June 11th, which is great. However, the requirement stands that individuals who are not vaccinated continue to need their masks until we either get to that June 28th date, or perhaps a little sooner when the governor lifts the mandate, when everybody that is required to be vaccinated is vaccinated. Did I hit everything? Any other questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
Just a, just a comment, I think, if I would. You know, number one, I, I appreciate Mrs. Blau's comments, and I think, you know, despite where we land on it, I do like hearing from, from the community. You know, advocating for what it is they, they desire. And I think then, you know, on our, on our side then, I mean, that, it's now our job to do advocating as well. As we've talked as a board, you know, one of the things we must continue to do is, you know, work with our, you know, legislators, et cetera, and move some of those agendas where they need to be. Obviously, we have some legal boundaries that we want to stay within. We want to try to do the right thing for students, for the school district as a whole, follow the law, et cetera. Sometimes that means trying to change what it is we don't like, or we don't agree with. So I do, I do appreciate all those that, you know, desire to, you know, make their, make their opinions known, you know, this evening. I think this is the process. This is how, how it works, and, and I, and I do appreciate that. You know, I think it's our job now as well to look at that, that plan, and, and now with the changing landscape, rewrite that, which I think is, is in the works, and, and then make sure that is well communicated out to the, out to the public. So, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
And just to further support what you're talking about, the revisions to the plan. Even PDE has indicated we're going to be required to make updates to that plan here in June. PDE is tying a lot of those updates and new information to the SRS funding that we're going to be receiving. So, you know, we're going to be going through a whole revamping process, and the hopes are that you have a lot more control about what goes into that plan. But there's going to be some parameters there relative to spending the money and, and how you are sort of running schools. But all in all, it looks like there's going to be a shift to put more discretion back in your hands.
Thank you, Ms. Say, for the update, that very thorough update on where we're at in the legal process regarding masks. All right, I did get word that we have our student board representative, Aileen Zamba, online tonight?
All right, so hi. Student Council has been up to, like, quite a few things. So we decided that this summer, we're going to be working on homecoming stuff. And we also have chosen our officers for next year. So our president is going to be Hannah Columbu, and our vice president is going to be, is it Gia? Gia Patel? Yeah, yeah. Gia, yes. And our vice president is Gia Patel. Our secretary is Sashi Patel, and our treasurer is me. And we're still looking for a board representative. So, yeah, we're gonna have to work on that, but that's pretty much all we have.
Thank you, Aileen, and congratulations on serving as student leadership once again. All right, this evening, or rather, this month, we are having only one school board meeting, and that means that tonight, we are introducing the topics as well as holding the vote for them. So we will move on to item eight, that is the minutes.
Eight point one is our minutes from the May 4th committee meeting and the May 11th board meeting.
Is there any questions on that item? May I have a motion to approve item eight, the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there, are there any, is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to item nine, that is budget and finance items.
Letter A is the adoption of our final budget for the year, for the 2021-22 school year, I should say. Letter B is our homestead-farmstead resolution that we do annually with our new amounts for '21-'22. Letter C is our agreement with Stock and Leader for the upcoming school year. You didn't get rid of us.
Thank you for having us.
Letter D is to authorize the business, this is an annual thing, to authorize the business office to make any budget transfers as needed for the year-end budget, for accounts that are overdrawn, to shift money from one account to another. Letter E is our annual agreement service agreements for the upcoming school year with Vista, and three Lebanon-Lancaster IU-13 agreements for occupational therapy, speech, and job training. Letter F is the Special Education Consortium agreements for IU District and London County. Letter G is our annual purchase of supplies through IU-13, and letter H is the appointment of Jonestown Dental Associates as the school dentist for the upcoming year.
Thank you. Are there any questions on those items? On behalf of the board, I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Say, as well as all of her team members at Stock and Leader. The past year has certainly not been an easy one in terms of decision-making when we're dealing with COVID and dealing with a building project. We very much appreciate your expert guidance throughout the year.
Thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure to serve this team here and to see the projects come to fruition, and nothing's more exciting than knowing you're going to have a graduation outside with all your folks in attendance. That's really an exciting capstone after a difficult year. So thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve item nine on all of the items under budget and finance?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We move on to item 10, buildings and grounds.
Yeah, this, this is something I communicated in an email in terms of appointing a three-person subcommittee to consider change order requests. This is something, actually, Dave Jones from Stock and Leader, is something that he suggested. The committee would be authorized to approve single change orders up to $40,000. The subcommittee would be scheduled to meet biweekly, and that schedule will then be advertised for public viewing. It would be able to be held via Zoom.
Are there any questions on that item? I did send out an email asking for volunteers. Do we have any additional volunteers at this moment? Hearing none, then I would just like to state that that committee will be composed of Directors Marlowe, Director Fowler, and myself. Um, may I have a motion to approve item 10 and that subcommittee?
Motion to approve the subcommittee for. Motion to approve the subcommittee for considering change order requests.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to our extracurricular items, that is item eleven.
Okay, we have extracurricular item, approve the senior class trip for May tenth, twenty twenty two.
Is there any questions on that item? May I have a motion to approve item eleven?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say, as the parent of a senior that went on that trip this year, that trip was fundamentally important to that kid's mental and emotional health. So I can't thank the advisors enough for planning it, for letting the seniors go. My son, who has not smiled much all year, came home and was smiling for a weekend. So an extraordinarily valuable trip, very much in favor of it and I'm very appreciative of the school for planning it and for the advisors for taking that responsibility on.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we move on to our curriculum items. We have several items there.
Twelve point one is for policies that we have for final adoption. Twelve point two are the two curriculum curricula that were brought a month ago and those are for final adoption. Item twelve point three, supplemental material for learning support, Math one eighty and Read one eighty. And I believe, yeah, it's a good program. It's a research-based program. I'm excited that Kelly has suggested getting that. And Pat had samples here. I don't know if anybody took a look, but they were over there. And item twelve point four, I've heard from a variety of people actually that in the past, there have been Memorial Day weekends where Northern Lebanon has had, actually off on Friday and made it a four-day weekend. We are revising the calendar to reflect that. It pushes our graduation back from a Tuesday to a Wednesday, which actually in some ways helps us because we have two days of rehearsal and preparation, so we don't have to wrap around a weekend. But it solves some other problems for us as well. And so making, recommending that one change to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar.
Are there any questions on those items? May I have a motion to approve all of the items under twelve curriculum?
Approve all the items under twelve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Now we have several items under human relations.
Okay, take a deep breath. A lot under, it's May and June, and that timeframe is busy from a human resources standpoint. A couple of additional retirements, Mr. Hess and Mrs. Smith are retiring. And we are certainly sad to see them go. It's a lot of years between the two of them, but they are, they're going to still be around, I hope, but they are retiring at the end of this year. We also have some classified substitutes for you under thirteen point two. I'm sorry, I failed to mention under thirteen point one. They're retiring, but they're going to substitute for us and that's why they're on there. Thirteen point two, we have some classified substitutes, Diane Nichols, Sharon Northridge, Mr. Rank, Mr. Bias. We also have a leave request for you to approve. Thirteen point four, under resignations, we have three. I'd like to thank Dr. Wenger for his time here. I think there's a letter attached for him for you to read. He's moving on to another opportunity for him. We're really happy for him as he's excited about it. Under thirteen point five, these are the folks that are coming to join us. Have had some great interviews, I feel, over the month of May. Thank you to the board for participating in the administrative ones. And also, we managed to talk to Dr. Wenger about giving us some consultation. As you know, we have a principal that has not been through the beginning of the year with us at the secondary level. And then assistant, also that our assistants have not been through that either. So we're in a situation where there may be some questions from time to time. So we've, he's offered to help after I spoke to him a little bit about that, so he's on there as well. Thirteen point six, we have some building moves this year to help balance out some staffing and for some open positions. The three positions, for instance, are on there. There's some other positions that were open that we've moved people from one place to another. Our numbers continue to fluctuate at the elementary level, particularly in our smaller schools. And there's occasions where we're going from three classrooms to two or two classrooms to one. And so we're moving some people around to balance that out. Thirteen point seven, we have a list of names for you there that are advancing on the academic credit schedule. Thirteen point eight, we have a list of our extended school year staff for the summer. And then thirteen point nine, we have another student for the summer work crew listed for you.
Thank you, Dr. Messinger. Are there any questions on those items?
Yes, I have two. I will need to abstain from thirteen, where is that one? Thirteen point two D, which I didn't realize. And also thirteen point five C. Do I need to?
Nope, that's Mrs. Martin, do you have that on record for Director Gray's abstention? Okay, thank you.
And I would just make a note on thirteen point five H, that's also a contract. You guys saw that that's attached. And how long is the contract here for your contract? I'd just like to have that be on the agenda.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on items thirteen point one through thirteen point nine? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items thirteen point one through thirteen point nine?
Motion to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain.
I say, I abstain?
Thank you. The motion has passed. Item fourteen is an informational item.
Yeah, these are people within buildings who are moving to different positions. They're listed for you. They do not require board approval for policy, but are listed for you there.
Thank you. Item fifteen is our reports from our representatives. Item one is our career and technology representative, Director Klein.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. And then we have our IU representative, Director Murray. Okay, thanks. And we, our legislative PSBA liaison is Director Sakelik and she is not here this evening. So we will move on to item sixteen, that is new business. Is there any new business for discussion this evening? Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great summer, everyone.